All right, we're gonna get, we're gonna get started. As, as custom, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. If you can.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God.
All right, welcome to the Bellingham Select Board meeting for, uh. Can you hear me good?
I can hear you.
Oh, all right, I thought, I thought you were.
No.
Uh, for the town administrative search night two. Uh, just a little overview for those of you who weren't here last night. Um, we are doing this very controlled, we are doing this just to maintain the integrity. One person is gonna be answering, uh, asking the questions, myself. Uh, the candidate is gonna respond and we are going to move on to the next question. There will be no follow up, there will be no room for comments, we just get through the questions, candidate will say the last piece. And we'll move on. Uh, each candidate will have one hour. Uh, for the interview, when there's five minutes remaining in the interview, Hillary will let us know. And that'll be the cue to, to wrap it up and to move on. So with that being said. Welcome, Mr. Chad Lovett.
Hi, hello.
Hi.
Introduce yourself.
Yeah.
Get it out of the way now. Don Martinez, please don't.
Great to meet you, Chad Lovett.
Hi, Anna Fashion.
Great to meet you, Chad Lovett.
Mike Kennesy.
Great to see you, thank you. Great to meet you. Great to meet you, thank you. Well, the audience says, hi everybody. Just watch me swing.
I can't reach him. Perfect.
Chad, just give you a little overview. I'm gonna ask the question. You're gonna answer the question. There'll be no room for follow up, there'll be no comments, we'll just move along. You will have one hour. When there's about five minutes left, Hillary's gonna give us a little signal at this five minutes left and that's a cue to wrap it up.
They're gonna talk quicker in those five minutes.
If there's, if there's five minutes left, yes.
Thank you.
All right, so you're, you ready?
I'm ready, let's go.
All right. Chad, tell us about yourself, your professional experience and why you are interested in becoming Bellinghamstown Administrator. This is your opportunity to sell yourself, so take as much time as you need.
Thank you. So, you already heard, my name is Chad Lovett. Uh, currently a county administrator in Blackstone. Uh, prior to that, I worked in Rentham, I was the director of facilities and capital planning man that started my government career. I, I know that it's surprising that I had a career before, now they don't look old enough. Um, I was a private sector guy for twenty years. I did, um, facilities planning, uh, project management. A highlight of my private sector was Trader Joe's, so when I was with Trader Joe's. I got to run facilities for, uh, most of the country, there was two of us there when I started and when I left, there was four hundred and fifty stores, so I got to learn. Crisis management, disaster management, how to treat people, um, I learned so much on my customer service there that I've carried over. Into my public sector career. When it was time to leave the, the private sector, I started thinking, how, how am I gonna keep working, I've gotta find something to do. Um, and I thought back to my time on the finance committee when I was younger, I was in the finance committee in Abington. Um, but eventually moved out of Abington, prior to that, I was the chair of the committee, uh. Moved on, haven't got back on the committee then, but I loved the time there, it was awesome to learn, uh, the inner workings of government. How the residents can impact the budget, the budget process. All the cool stuff that you get to learn on Fancome, so I was like, how do I find a way to make that into my career? And spent about a year and a half looking for a way into municipal government, it was hard then. Um, I had a town administrator that took the risk and, and brought me in, uh. From there, I went on, finished my undergraduate degrees. Enrolled in the Suffolk, uh, University MMA certificate program, got my MMA certificate. Went from there and got my Masters in Public Administration, which I recently walked at Suffolk with that, and then, um, in the mix of all that, got my, uh, procurement certification. So became a sponge for municipal government and have loved it, absolutely loved it, it's been a challenge. Um, and a joy, uh, uh, sometimes at the same time. Uh, being able to fix a residence issue or improve a process or bring value to the town and the residents. Uh, so why Belling? Um, as I said, I, I'm currently in Blackstone, so I'm familiar with Bellingham, we, we was employees here. Um, you get, telling him becomes the one, Bellingham's paying more, everybody wants to go there. Uh, so I've been following Bellingham, what's so great there, and what stands out the most to me is that's thirty-seven and a half years. That's unheard of, um, in municipal government, so, so the longevity here is what appealed to me. The, the challenge of moving from a smaller community up to a much larger budget. Um, more projects, more employees, and being able to take that next step in my career. And make, make impacts here, and that's why I wanna be in Bellingham, I think longevity is the, the greatest appeal.
Bellingham has seen tremendous new growth over the past decade, but FY twenty-seven looks to be potentially lean year with regard to new growth. Additionally, we are seeing increased costs in the area of health insurance and with our retirement assessment. How would you prepare for the FY twenty-seven budget process given these details?
FY twenty-seven is gonna be tough for everybody, I think we barely made it through. Our current budget, that we got hit with seventeen, sixteen point nine percent health insurance costs, I think you guys are a little less here from what I saw. And it's gonna continue. It's gonna be lean times for everybody, uh, the new growth isn't gonna continue forever, you guys have great, great growth, it's really exciting to look at the projects. Um, in any budget year. I think that it's important that we spend every dollar, why are we spending it, what's the return to the community, and I would look to continue that. In lean years, I think that really need to understand what's the critical services that we absolutely have to have. How do we preserve those critical services? And then what's the wants and the needs? From there, it wouldn't be in a bubble, uh, I would look to work with this board. To work with finance committee and work with all the departments to understand what their needs are. And make sure that we're meeting those needs the best that we can. Also getting creative, is there programs that we can look to work with other communities to save costs, is there? Contracts that we can extend for procurement on utilities or those items, is there savings there, the pennies will add up. Uh, I've done that in both communities, I've done it. Uh, look, look at the, the simple stuff, you know, what's the utilities, how are we buying utilities, is the contract up, can we lock in a rate? What are our telecommunications costs, can we go to a white plan, you know, I don't know that, that detail here, yeah, is there savings there? Anything that you can negotiate, should be negotiated, if we can drive down the cost.
The town has a few controversial projects proposed, which include a sixteen-hundred unit development. On a local country club, as well as a four hundred megabat, uh, megawatt battery storage project. These projects would generate much-needed tax revenue, but may be seen as unpopular developments. How do you work to balance the needs of the whole community as it relates to these developments?
Some of the projects, I think they're exciting projects, I've seen the signs through town, uh, with different opinions on, on one of the projects. I think it's important to balance the needs of the community and make sure that we're abiding by. What is the zoning and what are the planning decisions, what are the rules that we already have in place, are they being followed for these projects? Is there a gap where we can improve or change zoning, uh, requirements? But currently, what is, what is the plans in place and how can we best protect the town to make sure those roads will fall? Um, it's a balance, that, so we want to continue growth. But at times that might not be in line with people's views, uh. Going back to the master plan, what, you know, that's another plan and study, and it's, it's been. The guiding document, is this in alignment with that, I think that the master plan is a great time to say what are the needs? That the community has and wants and how are we gonna fulfill them? And I would look to that and the zoning regulations as guidance.
The town has a longstanding need to create, create additional senior housing. We will be working with, with a consultant to evaluate properties in town to meet these needs. What professional experience do you have that, that would help with this project?
So I haven't developed any senior housing, um, we're currently doing a site prioritization plan in Blackstone, so we've taken. A number of town-owned parcels, we're working with CMRPC, so, so Blackstone's with Central Mass Regional Plan. And we've partnered with them to look at those parcels and say, how can we? Better utilize those parcels, whether they're town-owned parcels or key pieces of private, private land, how can we work with those landowners? Um, we're in the midst of that, we recently, um, June thirtieth completed what they call the Economic Development Survey, so what needs? Does the town have in the residents view and in the employees view that we could utilize those properties potentially? And bring those needs, bring those services to the town. So not specific to the senior housing, but, um, with that site prioritization, like it's very similar, we're using a consultant for it. Or soliciting a community's feedback, I think it's, it's crucial, um, for any of those big projects to make sure the community is involved.
Bellingham will soon be constructing a PFAS treatment plant with an estimated cost of thirty-six million. What financing strategies would you explore to ease the financial impact?
So that's a massive project, and it worked, huge impact to the repairs, the water payers on, on that project, so in Blackstone, we've utilized the Clean Water Trust. So through the Clean Water Trust, we're able to get low-interest loans, uh, they're two percent loans. For the life of the project there, and there was, um, some debt forgiveness, so it was almost nine hundred thousand dollars and the debt was forgiven through the Clean Water Trust, that's a revolving fund. Through the Commonwealth, through DEP, um, to help get those projects completed because the, the community may not be able to afford it, so they offer the, the help with those projects. And to lessen, I think it's crucial to look at those. Um, if there's avenues for other, I was at, uh. Um, Jake Otting class's presentation last year on PFAS at Boston College. And it didn't sound like from there that there was a lot of hope on funding. From the federal level of PFAS, and I think that that's kind of in flux right now, it's look at changes to the environmental regulations. But if there is, there's hope there on the state or federal level, and look to that and work with the legislative partners to make sure that they're able to secure that.
What experience do you have with working projects through the TIP Transportation Improvement Program? Do you have experience with the Mass Works Grant Program? What other grant programs have you worked on?
So we haven't done a TIP project yet, um, I've had a great track record with grants and, um. Both Blackstone and in Rentham, I've done complete street grant, shared street grant. Green communities, I was able to bring green communities in Rentham from the initial phases to get it completed. And get that designation for the community, it was an awesome honor to be able to do that, that brought in, as, as you guys are familiar with, a lot of. Additional funding that we're already paying as, as utility rate payers. Um, I've done ADA projects and received state ADA grants. Park grants through the Commonwealth that helped recently build the playground, I got to manage that process. And I think we were all from the Arbor that was just wrapping up this year, um. That was awesome, that was, we're probably, hopefully never gonna see that again. But nothing specific with the tip, and I, I did see all the success that you've had with the tip here, um, on the Hartford Nav Project. The Bridge Project, so there's been a great track record, and I look to support that and work with your planner to continue those projects and the track record of grants.
The town administrator negotiates five collective bargaining agreements. Tell us about your experience in this area as, as well as how, how you prepare it for and engage in negotiations. What would your negotiating team look like?
I also have five bargaining agreements, and when I came into town, all of them were on the verge of expiration, they've been. Continued through MOUs. And it was time to begin negotiations right out of the gate, five unions, we successfully settled all five. My tactic would be the same, it's to meet with the unions, to meet with the representatives and understand what do they need. How can we meet those needs, what problems do they have that we wanna, that we wanna fix? For, for Blackstone, it was funding, we took a good swing at that this year and these past contracts. Um, with fire and clerical, and particularly they were both. Um, heavily underpaid, so. First is to communicate. Um, building the team, it would vary per, per bargaining agreement. It would be myself, it would be the CFO. The department heads, the chiefs, that would be, that would absolutely be involved in the initial meetings. What are they looking to accomplish, what struggles have they had over the life of those agreements that must haves? What will be the nice to haves? And then sit down and, it's a clear communication link that's key with every business. For both sides, what are we looking to accomplish, and what can we do? I don't think we need to play the game, keep moving. The goal line, what, let's set out to the beginning, what can we do? What do you need? Um, I built a great relationship with the unions and Blackstone by taking that approach and genuinely listening and understanding what is it that we want.
I want a department head in a municipality you currently manage or previously managed. Describe your strengths as well as areas to grow.
I hope they'd say that, that's strength, have strength in everything, uh. I think if you ask the department heads. They would say that I have, my strength in town is that I, I have a desire to learn, it's not unusual to see me out. With the department heads. Interacting with their staff, I wanna know what do they do, it's not because I wanna do it, I wanna know how I can support them. Uh, I've been out with our police, with our fire, uh. The Friday night when Public Works is calling me and telling me about a, a two-inch pressure sewer line that I didn't understand, I jumped in the car and drove up there and it was freezing that night, but I left there with an appreciation of. What they do when everybody's in that, and how that system worked, and helped me understand and be able to communicate. To the residents, why that system breaks, why is there blockages on that? I think that's a great strength, I, I can't sit in my office for forty or fifty hours a week, I have to be out, I have to interact with people. To learn who the employees are, who the department heads are, and what their challenges are, how, how can we support them? Uh, with that probably brings the area for improvement. I'm in a very lean community, small community, so I, I have the ability to get my hands on everything. At times that's a strength, at times I need to get better at delegating that, but with, with the small community, sometimes you just have to get involved in. Some of the stuff that maybe we don't wanna be, um, so delegating better would be the area for improvement. It's always the trick question, what's something bad?
How do you re, how do you remain apolitical in a political environment?
Survival, um, entering politics for town administrator is a horrible idea. I came into. Strong politics in Blackstone, it's a very politically active town, and I've done my best to stay out of it, and. It's tough at times. I do that by treating everybody the same, I wanna treat. Everybody fair, I wanna treat everybody equal, if I have information, it goes to everybody. I can't feel political desire, it's not gonna work, it won't work for me, it won't work for longevity that I'm seeking in my career, and it probably isn't gonna be good. For your board if I'm entering politics, it would be career ending, um. So. I stay apolitical, but it's, it's a conscious decision, you can't do it.
How will you keep the select board informed?
Select would like to be informed. I think every member is gonna have a different method, some are gonna wanna phone call. Some are gonna daily, some are gonna wanna text or, or some are gonna just wanna know the big stuff and some are gonna wanna know the small stuff, and I think that's. One of the priorities to learn coming into a new role is, how do all of you wanna be communicated? And that's how, that's crucial, I think, to have those conversations early on, what style? Do you want? So, um, Don, you may not want texts and just the phone call for the big stuff, where Jennifer may wanna know every time the police car goes by, I don't know, but. It's, it's your, it's, it's your needs that I would have to live.
What have you learned about Bellingham that concerned you and why? How will you approach addressing your concern?
So we've talked a little bit about the new growth. Uh, and your growth going into the, the future years, we've watched. Communities all around us face overrides, so I think the economic status of every community is scary right now, I think. Looking through the stabilization of us, we would wanna grow those, and I would look to do that through. Increasing the contributions to them, having financial policies that back that up with the buy-in of the board. Um, we, you know, we briefly touched on the PFAS point. And that would be an area where we could look at adding to stabilization, building out stronger capital stabilization funds to hit those unexpected as we come into. Unknown financial times that I think we're all facing. So that, but that's not, I don't think that's a, the Bellingham, we're all facing changing fiscal futures right now.
Describe, describe your skills and abilities in community relations, give examples and discuss how community relations impact your work.
I think it's the most enjoyable part of what I do is the interaction with the community. When I came in, we were just on the verge of rolling our web, new website. Um, we put a pause on that, made a number of tweaks and changes and updates to it, we rolled that out. We are working with a PR firm to help on bigger issues, how do we push out those messages? For clarity to the community, where we can drive the communication channels that we wanna use. Um, and it's about being out, I have to be out and interact with the community, it's not. In freak, it's not unusual to see me down at our senior center, um, if there's a lunch that I like to eat, so maybe that's why I'm down there, it's. Go down and have the lunch with the seniors. Be at the school reading books on, you know, morning lunch, uh, bringing a community member. Go to the fire station event, I, I really enjoy that part of my work, and I think that. By improving and, and continuing to improve our community relations, I'm able to better understand the community. I'm here to serve the community and meet their needs, and if I'm not approachable, and I'm not known at those events, there's gonna be a struggle there. Um. It's a family, you know, I bring in the kids, they get to go on the fire truck for Memorial Day. Um, my family understands that it's not nine to five and that I'm coming to the town events, I'm, I'm going out, I got to go hide. I was, I judging contest last year, um. Those events are huge, the community needs to see me. And I'm a representative of the town, so I should be out of those.
Tell us about a, tell us about community events you have led or have been a part of. What was your role on the day of the event?
So the Memorial Day Committee in Blackstone, um, for a number of years, we're in a. Huge, successful parade. With a carnival and fireworks, and the year before I came in, that was the last year of that committee, and. That committee disbanded and all that knowledge went with them. So that fell on myself, the Assistant Town Administrator, and two or three. Community volunteers to make sure that that event continued happening, and it, and it did. And it was a ton of work, uh, to rebuild all that, make improvements on communications. Uh, that the committee felt should be changed, changed the event. Um, how they wanted, and get it all done, and we did it in just a few short months, and we did it again this past one world. Um, that was a heavy lift, that was in the midst of all of the other town administrator functions, we were also planning a world. It was awesome to see it, um, on that first year, it ended right down to the wire, I was there, shuttling. Parade characters in the senior center van to make sure that they made it to the start line. I was there as a support, whatever was needed to ensure that event went off. We were there, we were doing, it was a hands-on. Throw on the jeans and get down and dirty at the work kinda day. So, thank you for tomorrow when they all watch, to that, that group that jumped in.
All right, please take a moment to offer any closing remarks.
It's the end of the hour, honey? I talked way too quick, you had me under pressure. I didn't wanna get that five-minute warning, Hillary.
No, it's not even been twenty-five minutes.
Oh, no. You want me to fill thirty-five with this?
That's your call. That's your thirty-five.
I don't wanna be the, the barrier to you guys doing one more and going home, uh. First, thank you, I know this has been to, to this board and to your search committee, thank you, I know this has been a long haul. I've been following it, um, I'm sure that you all wanna get it done, so, so thank you. Um, I'd love to be a part of the community here, I've watched it from just next door, I think. It would be a great honor to come and serve the, the town of Bellingham and be a part of the next, I don't know if I can do thirty-seven and a half, but maybe twenty or thirty. Years and, and see how I can help better the town, so, so thank you. My brief closing remarks, but.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you all. Thank you, I'll tell this.
You can do the rounds again.
You want me to do that? I'm gonna go really slow. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Much easier to thank you. So I'm gonna do, everybody here also, watching that clock.
Thank you all.
Hi.
How are you?
Don Martinez, Joe Layden.
Hi, Anna Fashion, nice to meet you.
Mike Kennesy. Nice, nice to meet you.
Oops, sorry, there's a little mess there. They don't quote us best.
All right, welcome, Mr. Layden.
Pleasure to be here.
Give you a brief little rundown before we get started, sounds fit, um. Just to control everything, uh, I'm going to ask the question. You ask the question, there'll be no follow-up, there'll be no discussion after you ask the question, we'll move on to the next one. Yeah, you have one hour. When there's about five minutes left, Hillary's gonna let us know that there's five minutes left, and that's basically just giving you a warning.
That's good.
All right?
Okay.
Here we go. Tell us about yourself, your professional experience, and why you are interested in becoming Bellinghamstown Administrator. This is your opportunity to sell yourself, take as much time as you need.
Well, uh, first I'd like to thank you all, uh, for having me here, it's, uh, really an honor to be in front of all of you and to meet the people of the, uh, search committee. Um, had great conversation for that first round interview and sort of having opportunity to sort of talk about. My experience and also how, uh, there may be a good amount of alignment with the town of Bellingham. Uh, so just first about myself, um, I grew up in Sutton, then a Blackstone Valley, and I mean, you got a little corner, uh, here in Bellingham, um. Uh, raised in Blackstone Valley and, uh, live in, currently in Northbridge with my wife and three daughters. Uh. Went to college at WPI in Worcester, again, sort of staying local and then decided, you know what? Had a really cold winter, lot of snow, and thought, let's just try to. Get some diff, different experience, went down, got my graduate in city regional planning from University of Tennessee. Actually was down there when Peyton Manning was quarterback, uh, really cool, so, I know, being here with. Patriots and Brady, you know, that may not be sort of all that, that cool or, or, but. Being down there, it was exciting to be, um. At SCC games down in Tennessee. Realizing that, okay, winters were great, but summers were not fun, I made my way back to New England first. Uh, up in northern Vermont, sort of almost too much of an extreme, and then came back down to Massachusetts. Where I started my municipal career as a town planner in Wayland. Worked there for nine years, various projects, including redevelopment of the old Polaroid site into what is now the Wayland Town Center. Um, and even got to represent the town of Wayland in public hearings in Natick for the, uh, expansion of the Natick Mall. That unfortunately twenty years ago. Um, so, uh, but throughout my municipal career, I always wanted to try to expand what my interests were. I was president of my, uh, the department heads in Wayland, they were part of a union. I was president of the union, got involved in, um, HR issues, even. Uh, disciplinary issues, uh, trying to work with, uh, a uni, a union member that was. Put on a performance improvement plan, uh, was chair of the IT committee and really tried to sort of expand beyond, uh, just being the town planner there. Uh, worked then in Stoughton and Weston before professionally moving to. Back to the Blackstone Valley and, uh, was the community development director, town planner, and grabbed them for six years. And I fortunately had a town administrator who was supportive of. My sort of looking to go beyond, uh, town planning, and I did the MMA Suffolk Certificate course, really. Uh, found a, a love for all aspects of government and, uh. Took a chance and became the Assistant Town Administrator, uh, Administrator in, uh, Littleton. Um. So, starting from a planning background, I came on board to bring some of that, Littleton, like Bellingham, four ninety-five, lots of commercial residential growth, really trying to. Balance that, uh, development against town character. But within six months, I actually found myself as interim, uh, town administrator and then leading, uh, the, uh, town staff, and this was all through COVID. Uh, being the interim through revising our FY, uh, twenty, uh, one budget. Because then we started getting used to COVID, so developing the reopening plans, making sure that staff could get back connected. Uh, I then, uh. Following that, reverting back to the town administrator role, I also served, uh, sorry, the Assistant Town Administrator role. Served as HR Director and, uh, assisted in really establishing a new HR department. Because the HR specialist, who was also the Assistant Treasure Collector. She was retiring when we were separating those functions, so got a chance uh in Littleton to start to really. Um build the organization and fulfill some of the HR roles. Um and separating them out from what were combined roles. And I did everything from uh doing a, I was also the chief procurement officer, I developed. RFQs for mowing the town forest, uh sorry, the town orchard. Uh trying to get a new vendor to maintain part of that, uh expanding uh the. Uh cemetery, getting into various procurement projects and that was a great opportunity to really hit. And improve many areas within Littleton. Uh when. In uh twenty twenty uh three, an opportunity in town next to me in Northbridge enough to open up. And had to jump at it, it was sort of again um a unique opportunity that presented itself that I thought it was really well suited for. Shortly being there, I found that um through retirements, we actually had a couple people pass away. And some people just leave for greener pastures, which sometimes happens when you have um say a change in leadership. Um had to really focus on replacing really key department. Uh uh positions, treasure collector, assistant treasure collector, town clerk. Um uh our town planner was part-time, so. That first year uh was really restructuring the internals of Upton Town Hall. And uh including reorganizing the land use department, which was all separate departments into a consolidated. Uh department uh of land use and hiring a full-time planner. All this while we're also building a new community center which houses the library and senior center. And overseeing that shift from the old two two separate uh facilities into a merged one. So my first couple of years in in Upton were incredibly busy, now we sort of have stable staff, it's it's really focused on retention. And making sure that um everyone is is happy and, you know. Uh we recently also completed a um. Uh compensation class uh and sorry, compensation plan and classification plan, which then was funded at town meeting, so. Come before Bellingham with what I'd like to think of the considerable amount of experience. Here, what made Bellingham interesting was uh that. There's a lot of alignments to my experience in Grafton and Littleton as far as some of the issues you're facing with, you know, the large development on the Wind Socket line, the old. Or the New England Golf Course, some of those issues, the issues that you've been faced with development, warehouse development and also your overly district. On Hartford Ave, those issues balancing it against uh quality of life issues while also trying to maintain town services. You know, is something that I that really sort of aligns with some of my experience in sort of larger towns, I Grafton and Lowtham being. Somewhat similar to to Bellingham. So this was a unique opportunity and a unique opportunity that also is like only fifteen miles away, it's actually pretty close. Um and in municipal uh governments, sometimes these opportunities that are less than twenty-five minutes from door to door. Um they're a unique opportunity because they don't come along that often and as. Dennis, and as an example, in Bellingham, it may not come along for a long time. So seeing that opportunity, just uh felt that had to jump at it and I think there's a lot of things that. Uh my experience aligns with and also things you've undertaken that make it a very attractive town.
Bellingham has seen tremendous new growth over the past decade, but FY twenty-seven looks to be a potentially lean year with regard to new growth. Additionally, we are seeing increased costs in the area of health insurance and with our retirement assessment. How would you prepare for the FY twenty-seven budget process given these details?
So I don't think Bellingham's unique in this situation, um. It it's funny, uh you know, just like your town meeting, Upton's town meeting was now uh a month ago. And we're two days into FY twenty-six, but it's like FY twenty-six is already gone, we're already planning for FY twenty-seven. Um the the uncertainty in uh the economy. Uh and municipalities love certainty. You know, uh I'm sure if I was to sit down with your finance director and and try to do five-year projections on revenue and expenses. You know, identifying where we're gonna be, um one of the the assumptions is. Are things going to be predictable? And that's an unknown. Um it's also hard to identify when you're gonna be really hit with health insurance uh premium increases that. Zap your ability maybe to fund moving a half-time position to a full-time or. Bringing on additional personnel because. How if you went from a twelve percent and FY twenty-five and then you go to. A nineteen percent, how do you absorb that? Uh changes with uh. And recognizing you're in Norfolk now in Worcester uh county, uh we have a twenty percent increase in retirement. That was. Corely on Worcester retirement side uh communicated, so it sort of caught my finance director by surprise. Um and we also just in uh FY twenty-five settled all our union contracts as well, so. FY twenty-seven is, we're already just like for Bellingham, thinking that's gonna be a challenging year, so you know, it starts with. Making sure that you have a good understanding as far as your your the foundation of the town, you have recently um. Uh settled union contracts, um although I understand that at least from looking at uh. Bellington Bulletin that maybe there's still a outstanding contract with schools. Um looking at the the fundamentals, looking at um and talking with the assessing and building department to to check to see, are we seeing trends that? Um may impact the number of building permits, the even if it's not the quality of building, the quantity of building permits, the quality. Are people shifting away from new construction to additions? Um getting an understanding of those things, getting an understanding from planning conservation, what's in the pipeline, so we can start to look at. Where may we end up being from a new growth perspective in FY twenty-seven, but then also looking at. Potential cuts that even if they're not coming from the federal government, they make him to the state and then funnel down to us, you know, and. I trying to identify what are some of those key components um that you need to try to protect and what are some. Creative ways that you could maybe approach solving problems a little differently, is there an opportunity? Uh like you already do with some of your neighbors on uh, you know, like they'll even the recording of the show um cable with. Uh with Mendon, are there other opportunities like animal control that I believe you have with uh adjacent community as well? Are there some additional things that maybe we can work collaboratively, elaborately with other towns to try to. Identify savings and efficiencies. You know, we're only six months away from plant for planning for FY twenty-seven, so it seems like it's so far away. But it's not and getting the team focused on what that would be like would be one of the first things if I was chosen would be focused on. And one of the nice things is you have the staff in place to be able to do that. Um from from your finance director to the HR director, who's now also the assistant town administrator. Um and. You know, it's it's interest, it was interesting learning more about uh the team that you have here and how many people are new. Uh really two years or less, um and tapping into. Their knowledge, experience and what they may have seen in other towns before come here to think about a little bit more creatively. About how to tackle some of those things, uh because. If hard decisions need to be made, you don't want to be surprised by them or have them come at at you last minute. And that includes, you know, having open and frequent conversations with the school R M A. So I within Upton, I've already told my finance director, my finance director is remote and only part-time. I'm the on-prem finance director uh for Upton, five days a week. Um but as part of the annual evaluation process, basically said. We're gonna have to do a lot more modeling, we're gonna have to do more analysis and. Uh I have a great relationship with our superintendent of Metta- Mendon Upton School System. And we're already talking about where they're gonna be so we can try to identify. Uh might the school district need an operational override, um they've been uh using their global enough free cash. For the last couple of years and because they're regional. They're sort of outside of our our process, so where we've we've had frequent conversations over the last year and a half, looking out and. Each year we've pushed things off, but FY twenty-seven is gonna be tough for many reasons and. Uh totally understand why you'd all be concerned about that sitting at at your um dais.
The town has a few controversial projects proposed, which include a sixteen-hundred unit development. On a local country club as well as a four hundred megawatt battery storage project. These projects will generate much-needed tax revenue, but may be seen as unpopular developments. How do you work to balance the need of the whole community as it relates to these developments?
So it's a very good question, um and looking more at the project, um. Not many communities are face with uh such a large residential project like you're you're facing. Uh one of the first things is making sure that uh all the information, all the processes are clear and transparent. Um you have all that information on the website, you have meetings that are available for view on the website as well. And um so looking for opportunities to make sure that. The um pros and cons of the project are out there for the residents to understand and provide feedback. Ultimately, um you know, going through some sort of uh cost-benefit analysis. Looking at and getting the input from department heads on whether or not it's gonna tax, uh say, uh fire department. Ambulance runs or or police or even schools, um sort of like. Towns that have dealt with large forty Bs, um you try to mitigate things, but sometimes. You may have to engage legal counsel because maybe those impacts are too great and that um you know, after can't. Careful analysis. Um of what is being proposed for mitigation just isn't sufficient. Uh with both projects, uh you know, it's uh always a concern and especially uh. Learning what the concerns of residents may have. Um I know the towns are already concerned about traffic impacts, uh you have various. Uh corridor studies and and improvement plans on how to mitigate uh traffic impacts. Uh you know, a lot of the warehouse development that have been uh built recently. All those those impacts people experience just trying to get out their driveway or or get to work. Um but trying to understand the full uh say impact of those developments and and work with. Development teams on trying to. Uh not only recognize the impact, but find ways to mitigate that, that's that's one of the. Things at least I'd be looking for for opportunities and also. You know, from the residents, making sure that, you know, sometimes there there are things that can be done to mitigate the impacts, especially for directors. Identifying what those are and also making sure that the residents are heard. Um I've I've seen public processes devolve into um really. Uh sort of separate camps, um and I do believe that. Uh boards, uh review boards and town officials can uh take steps in order to make sure that. The development process and consideration of these developments. Um and ultimate uh steps, whether it's supporting approval or maybe appealing um a project. Uh that there's always opportunity for for dialogue and working on things and um I have the experience and. Uh negotiating development agreements for projects that then are supported by the town to make sure that uh the impacts. Uh that maybe are are identified, the developer would be responsible for that the town's protected so that. Uh the developer sells to someone else and then you're dealing with someone else that you've never had conversations with. Uh so I think there's many tools um that towns can use, but one of the main things is just transparency about this.
The town has a longstanding need to create additional senior housing. We'll be working with a consultant to evaluate properties in town to meet these needs. What professional experience do you have that would help with this project?
Uh so, um from direct experience. You know, I've I've worked on uh affordable housing plans almost in every single community that either was town planner for community development director or even. Uh town manager, uh that was one of the first things when I got to opt and work on was completing our. Uh starting and completing our affordable housing plan and. Uh right after we did that house and reduction plan, we then sought CPC funding for. A affordable housing trust action and and the distinction is one long-term goals versus. Developing an action plan that then really identified we're gonna do. These things within the next three to five years and really give the Affordable Housing Trust a um. Almost like a work plan on what they're going to accomplish, um uh and one of those. In Upton is senior housing and that was something that each town that I work have worked in was really focused um on and. Especially if it's something that you're looking at maybe leveraging town-owned land for that purpose. Um you know, there's there's uh not only resources uh that then are available as far as helping the town to evaluate. Uh but you know, we've uh I've had experience with submitting RFPs to get a designer. Um designer services and then also putting out an RFP to solicit proposals. Uh for then the ultimate development of property and. Uh an example is when I was a town planner in Wayland, uh the federal government was basically. Uh turning back to uh towns and the state, the old Mikey missile sites. Uh if we used it for uh recreation purposes, we didn't have to pay for it, if we use it for other purposes, we actually had to pay for it, and what we did was. On um three point six uh acres of land. Uh we developed a plan for affordable housing, but not. In a forty B sense of way where you had market and uh twenty-five percent affordable. That you have the deeply below eighty percent affordable, but then you also provide workforce house. Uh so that there was units that were available for people, one hundred, hundred and twenty percent of median income. Um put that out uh to RFP, got a developer, worked with the developer, secured funding through CPC and other grants and. Um uh that project was ultimately constructed and it was always interesting after the fact going to planning conferences. Having that as an example as far as what towns can do to really uh. Guide their own destiny when it comes to housing, um so if if Bellingham is looking and evaluating uh town property. For that purpose, um you know, I'd make a couple assumptions, one that you've already identified the need and the pot and sort of the. The qualifications for for maybe seniors that you're looking to help. Um uh and you know, whether it's a mixture of housing types, whether it's all one floor, whether it's apartments or. Uh small ownership units, uh looking at what you're you're trying to achieve and look to see you can use. Uh provide funding through uh community preservation when you go after grants. Um can you also seek assistance from the state and uh. Grant funds, mass works, housing works to assist fund those projects. Uh so I um have experience from my previous towns and. Uh looking at town lands uh for affordable housing and some housing development intentions.
Bellingham will soon be constructing a PFAS treatment plant with an estimated cost of thirty-six million. What financing strategies would you explore to ease the financial impact?
So, um first, uh would basically be um uh looking for grant opportunities and also there's uh. Zero percent interest programs for water uh infrastructure that uh. Could be applied for and secured. The other thing is also working with our state legislatures to see if there's opportunities for for grant funding, um earmarks or other assistance. Uh this, this problem of of PFAS, um you know. It's been over the last few years, it's been a moving target with uh standards that have been ill-defined. And then all of a sudden, um you know, new guys come out of the federal government for uh maybe increasing uh certain. Amounts that previously weren't deemed uh to be hazardous and now there's potential for rolling back some of those, so it's. It's uh been a moving target and probably will continue to be a moving target, understanding that Bellingham has has moved forward as far as. Understanding that Bellingham has, has moved forward as far as planning for that and looking at ways to uh, to, uh, construct and also finance. Um, you know, you do have uh, and I'm not familiar with what you have as far as, um, your enterprise funds for water um, and what you've already sort of secured as far as bonding, but looking to see how diverse and what different uh buckets of, of money, uh, would be available, uh, including coming from trying to petition the state for additional, uh, assistance, uh, would definitely be some options to consider.
What experience do you have working with projects through, through the TIP transportation improvement program? Do you have experience with the Mass Works Grant Program? What other grant programs have you worked on?
So, uh, uh, yes, I, I do for, for Mass Works as well, as well as the tip project. So uh, currently the state has a tip project and opt-in to, uh, reconstruct uh, one forty through the center of it and including right outside, uh, town hall in my window, the installation of a new roundabout. Uh, where there's right now a somewhat um, high accident location, uh, I hear many screeches, honks of the horn on a hourly basis outside my window. Uh, and their solution is gonna be a, a roundabout. Uh, they're approaching seventy-five percent design. We already two years ago held a twenty-five percent design hearing. And while not required by the state, we are working with, uh, District Three, uh, Mastot to hold a sort of town-sponsored seventy-five percent, uh, meeting because with some of these projects, when there's a long amount of time, uh, between when things are out for the public, uh, people lose track of it. They may, they may forget details, but the state also makes changes. Uh, this this tip project is gonna have bike lanes and we're gonna have a hybrid hybrid where, where we have bike lanes on one side of the road and parking on the other because we have businesses that were gonna be negatively impacted if we had, uh, bike paths, uh, sorry, uh, bike lanes on both sides of the uh, so we've been working with the state to move forward those plans. We also at the special town meeting in November. We appropriated funds to hire our own, uh, landscape architect and consulting firm to work on historic lighting as well as benches, streetscape, because the state isn't doing any of that. Um, similarly, when I was the community development director and uh, Grafton, uh, one of the first things I worked on was the uh reconstruction of one, of Providence Road, one twenty-two A, uh, also Main Street and saw that from the inception all the way through for approval and uh, engineering and I left Grafton before they put that project out to bid. Uh, but one of the nice things about working for municipalities is uh, there's the unique opportunity. You have someone come to the counter and ask a question, why is the state doing this? Why is the engineer doing this? And, um, we actually saw an opportunity to tee up a intersection uh, that was coming in and it historically been there. You look at historic maps. It came in at a weird angle from the late eighteen hundreds. You look at old photos. But now, right, because now there's an elementary school, there's a fire station, if anyone's familiar with South Grafton, um, we pulled the intersection away, we created additional green space and, um, now it's it's nice to be able to drive by and see that you made a, a real concrete impact on people's experience and, uh, and especially with that tip project. Uh, for Mass Works and Grafton, we were successful in achieving uh, receiving five hundred thousand dollar grant through Mass Works to extend sewer, um, along Route Thirty to support a, um, industrial DCAM, Department of, um, Capital Asset Management on the state level was looking at getting rid of some state land. And we worked with DCAM to, uh, rezone a portion as, uh, industrial along Route Thirty. And we brought up water and sewer to not only support a new zoning district where there would be mixed use, but also to serve that, um, property that, um, uh, was, was rezoned to industrial. Uh, coming to Upton, one of the first things that we did was we had a senior housing project that was being built about, um, a mile up the street from the center of, of Upton. And we applied for Mass Works for a three point two million dollar grant to extend water and sewer up to support that housing development. Uh, the first time, uh, we weren't successful, but we received two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars in engineering grants. If the state gives you engineering grants, they usually like the project and as long as you can then demonstrate that this is a doable project, they'll, they'll fund you. The next year, once we, um, engaged time on to do that work, we applied for the remaining of the three point six and we received it. We were working with the developer during, uh, negotiations for the developing, development agreement to nail down their contribution towards the project of seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They asked for conditions that we just couldn't live up to. They wanted their money back if they didn't, um, have an occupancy by a certain date. Um, that was not in the town's best interest. We backed out of the development agreement. We went back to the state. Said we need an additional six hundred thousand dollars to do that project. And we were successful in the fall of twenty twenty-four and securing that additional six hundred uh, thousand dollars. So now that three point six became a four point two million dollar grant and we're actually constructing it right now. That was while it was applied under, uh, One Stop for Growth. It was under their, um, Housing Works, which is a new program where they're trying to support housing development, MBTA community infrastructure compared to Mass Works, which is what, um, received a five hundred thousand dollars for Grafton.
Town administrator negotiates five collective bargaining agreements. Tell us about your experience in this area as well as how you prepare for and engage in negotiations. What would your negotiating team look like?
Uh, so, uh, I've negotiated contracts and Littleton being part of a team and then also as town manager in Upton. Um, and on the reverse, I was, uh, you know, upset when I was, uh, department head in, in Wayland, so I was see it from both sides. Uh, members of the team, um, besides HR Director, um, uh, Finance Director is an important component as well as safer, uh, police, the police chief, fire chief, DPW. Um, uh, especially because police, fire, DPW, there's a lot more specifics. Uh, and you know, one of the benefits is, is especially, um, you know, being able to as a team really identify what the impacts are gonna be of, of um, saving the negotiation process, establishing, uh, the town's uh, say, approach, um, within Upton, I negotiate the, uh, the contracts. But I meet with the board in advance, um, to sort of talk about what myself and the department heads are thinking, what, what um, uh, what we may have issues with the contracts, but then also maybe from a financial planning, uh, where we uh, think we can be in what, what we can accommodate, because it's not only the unions, we also have to think about non-union staff. And we have other financial impacts, capital, uh, plan that we need to think about funding. So coming down to sort of negotiations first, uh, negotiations really you have to almost back up and say that first, you hope there's an opportunity to establish rapport, uh, with staff and, uh, police officers, DPW, fire, in advance of even sitting down at the negotiation table, getting to know staff, getting to know um, how they work, what their work level is, uh, building rapport, um. I've fortunately not been in a situation where my first interaction with them is at a negotiation table. I've always had an opportunity to talk either, um, as part of department meetings, as part of, of other interactions. You know, there's always employee trainings, uh, that, that are occurring and should be occurring. So that, you know, you're just not going blind. So it's like, hi, how are you? I've not met you for the first time and I've been here for three years. Um, so sort of starting with building a rapport and getting to know all the town because realistically, yes, um, people that are representing the unions, they want best for their employees. Um, but they also know they, they, they can't ask for the money that towns are limited. And especially if you get people that are living in town, um, you know, they also know the, the town's constraints and what can, can happen. Um, so I always try to be respectful, make sure that, um, we're having an open and honest conversation. Um, that through the process, everything is documented, love track changes, um, uh, because, you know, we need to be able to sort of identify from start to finish where we've gone and how we've come because also, you know, ultimately bringing things back in front of, of the select board. You all wanna understand how we arrived at, at things as well. Um, and, um, yeah, very often no one's ever happy, um, but if people are at least satisfied that they've been heard, listened to, that their, their concerns have been addressed and uh, we just, the beginning of twenty twenty-five, we uh, settled with our last union, fire union. There are some things you're like, look, let's kick it off. We're gonna be back here in two and a half years. This is a perfect thing to, to bring back up, but we've made steady progress and to realize that this is a relationship. Um, and that, you know, we're, we're all trying to improve the organization together.
Uh, what a department head in a municipality you currently manage or previously managed, describe your strengths as well as areas for growth.
Um, great question. Uh, so, um, I think one of the, the the strengths, um, I have an open door policy, um, uh, yes, department heads can come back in, they're, they're, uh, they're, they're very polite. They check with my executive assistant, is he free? Uh, and usually before she even answers, I'm saying, yep, come on in. Um, my door is open to not only department heads, but staff, uh, residents, um, and, and basically everyone, um. You know, my, I have my full calendar, uh, schedule and outlook. So if there's a meeting or a teams, you know, my executive sees it, but also that's the only time my door shut is when I'm like on a team's call or I'm in a meeting. Other than that, um, you know, I have open, open door. Um, you know, I think my approachability is, is one of those, those strengths. I think uh, one of the, the, the challenges Upton's a little different because maybe unlike, uh, Bellingham where you have some additional support structure. Um, I don't have an assistant town administrator. Like I said, I don't even have a, uh, full-time finance director. And, um, sometimes, like, sort of coming to the rescue maybe a little too quick because the finance director is not, not available. Um, and that's mainly because within our process, like an example is, uh, when people get a call about a vendor. Um, they'll be looking for a check. Um, not every department has a, a Vadar license. Uh, that was something that previous town administrator and the finance, uh, town manager and the finance director just gave it to certain departments. Um, I'm somewhat of a technology geek, so for me it's pretty easy, log on, get that taken care of. And before the, the, um, email to the finance director is even composed, I already can say, hey, look, this was on the warrant. Um, and it's there. Uh, there's some times where I realized like, you know what? I need to encourage that communication between that department head and the finance director. That was not a mission critical and just sort of let the process go out. But I also know that our department heads are under, um, a lot of pressure because like every municipality, we have a lot of work to get done and, uh, sometimes that can be pretty stressful. Um, making sure that everyone has those resources, uh, and, uh, coming up this summer, working with my treasure collector, we're like, let's do self-training. Let's find a way we can train train the trainees type, type situation and give people, uh, that fishing pole in order to let them fish. And, yeah, may cost a little bit more, but to have the town manager look up if a check was cut and, and cleared for a department that doesn't have that tool. It was just, and this just happened just this past week. Uh, because we're also at year end, so there's a lot of financial stuff coming back and forth. It was just one of those epiphanies of like, you know what? Just because I can do it in two seconds by logging on doesn't mean I should. And, um, and this is sort of falling back on sort of like, uh, 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 the history of the town planner and me. Town planners are great, uh, positions to have in towns because usually when someone doesn't know what to do, they say, give it to the town planner. Um, and so I sometimes approach that mentality like, oh, well, they're at my desk. I can answer that. I can take care of that. Um, so being able to just make sure that it's, uh, given out to the departments and making sure like finance director replies tomorrow morning. Cause he, he's remote, he has a daytime job. He'll look at things at midnight and, you know, realistically, that can, can wait. That's probably one of the, uh, the, if a staff person in Upton was honest that, um, while it could be viewed as a strength, also a criticism that um, I can let things play out a little bit more.
How do you remain apolitical in a political environment?
I've seen a lot of changes in my last twenty-five years in municipal government. Um, everything from and you're lucky you still have like the, the Bellingham bulletin to at least have a newspaper. Um, we get out coverage in Upton and the only thing that makes the news is when we have the article to go from, uh, board selection to select board. It's like Metro Westdaly News want to make this huge issue and it's like sixty percent of towns made the change. It's like, it's not a big deal. Um, so, you know, being able to, uh, get information out and, um, uh, available and have processes transparent. I think that's one of the, the starting places, uh, for sort of being apolitical, making sure that there's just, um, every opportunity to get out what is going on in town. Um, make sure that you're approachable, treating everyone the same. Um, sort of a odd, odd way of providing, um, an example. When I was in Wayland during an annual evaluation and I was supervised by the board, not by the town administrator at that time. Um, they were doing my annual evaluation and as you know, sometimes permitting boards can be come political, pro-growth, anti-growth. And I actually had two members of the planning board yelling at each other saying, no, he should do this. No, we should do that. He should treat residents one way, developers another. And my view for uh, for my whole municipal career is I treat everyone exactly the same. My doors open. I view that all views are valuable. Everyone has a unique perspective that they bring to the table. And as town administrator, as municipal employee, um, you know, I know one of the things we have to sort of counter is just all this shady stuff that happens in, in offices. Um, I use um, every tool that's available to me to sort of get information out. Once a month, I'm sitting down at the senior senate, senior center um, for coffee with the town manager and, and seniors just come in and just it's an hour. There's, sometimes I bring guests. Um, I'll bring in when it's around, uh, tax time, I'll bring the assessors in. I brought uh, the, the town planner in to talk about his specific director. I probably have a DPW director, but sometimes it's just me and we're just talking about general issues for an hour and a half. It's in the, the newsletter for, for Upton, so people know it's out there. Um, I do for every meeting of the select board, I do a town manager report. And that, that report is published on the website and we push it out on social media so people can see an update. Um, uh, I use our local, uh, cable to do pre-town meeting videos to talk about what's gonna be on the annual special town meeting warrant. Um, and we use time at the beginning of our meeting to highlight some of the work that town employees are doing. We had a GIS, uh, intern who was, uh, a resident of Upton graduating from Worcester State, provide the select board with, uh, a presentation of the work he did over the summer, helping assessing and conservation, including new trail maps. There's a lot of work that town departments, employees and even board members. There's a lot of work that town departments, employees and even board members do. And finding ways to make that available and digestible is one of the ways that I think. Really helps to maintain a, a political position.
Right. How will you keep the select board informed?
So, that's one of those things that I, it's really ends up being two, two ways because. Um, all of you may have different communications topics. So there's, there's easy things such as, uh, my town manager reports. Uh, where I talk about everything that's going on in departments and also provide project updates. Uh, make sure that that information is also on the, the website. Uh, there's, um, uh, are. Within Upton and I brought this from me from Littleton. And I, I did this in other towns where we produce a meeting packet, um, so. Uh, all the supportive information for the board meetings is there. Uh, I provide a summary as far as the topic, I provide proposed motions. Uh, for the board, they can or they may read it or they may come up with their own. Uh, but that's posted on the website the Friday before Tuesday meeting, um. Uh, so that not only provides the board with all the information they need, but also the public knows what they're considering. Unfortunately, in both of our lines of work, there can be really some serious things that happen. Um, I have texted board members at two o'clock in the morning when there's been a deadly, um, car accident. Uh, I've texted them that, uh, there's, um, another car accident during the day or if there's detours that needed an outfit. Um. I know everyone, you know, now that there are apps for police scanners, um. Very often. Board members may hear before I do, and I want to make sure that if, if board members hear something that. There's that line of communication back and and forth as well. Um, we had an instance where, uh, police chief let me know at. Um, say it was three fifty. I email, I texted the board, this is going on right now, I'll get you more information once I hear it. At three fifty-two, a reply from the chair of the select board was. Great to know, people were asking. So there's things, we have our own sort of, uh, groups of communication, so making sure that we can both communicate with each other. And also learning from you, um, do you like emails, would you like to have a one-on-one sit-down? Um. Uh. You know, identifying what works because what work may work for you, Cody may not work for you, Don. Um, and I want to be able to meet you where your sort of. Life, um, may require you to be and, um, you know, the, the one thing, just because the. They commute would be so short, when I was going up to Littleton, because I had like an hour. I'd be on the phone with the, the chair in that time because she was leaving for work at that time. So finding out from, from you and also just being flexible. Um, finding flexible what works and what doesn't because. I could be sending out emails every Friday with sort of, hey, this is what's gone on during the week, especially when it's off meetings. But if there's something that, you know, you don't like in the format or, or hey, we liked a little bit more of this. That's where really it's constant feedback back and forth because ultimately, communication. It's a two-way road and what works. If it worked, if, if someone thinks it's working only in one way, you're gonna really hit a dead end pretty quick.
What have you learned about Bellingham that concerned you and why? How will you approach addressing your concern?
Um. Well. It's, it's, it's interesting because of the fact that in doing the research. And just to sort of like back up, um. Uh, while. Past times you went out, I was not in, um, not prepared to apply, I was, I am generally aware of. Of the, the two previous, uh, searches and. Everything's on YouTube now, um, uh, so. One of the things in, in looking at Bellingham was the, the deeper I dove, actually the more impressed I was with. Uh, hiring of, of new staff that you've done, some of the, the promotions that you've. Made within DPW as well as, um, your HR department. Um, so some of those things, you know, were, were, uh. Pleasant surprises say, hey, like this is a town that clearly cares about, um. Uh, its employees and. Really finding someone to step into Dennis' big shoes. Um, that also is one of the big challenges, um, and one of the hard things is how do you. Step into those shoes. Um, you have someone who's been a resident of the community and, uh, such a, a presence within town hall. That's hard and that's a little daunting, especially coming into, to this, this, this seat, um, because. Um, clearly. Town administrators managers, um. On average, they're rotating five years and some have shorter tenures, some have long. Um. But not, you know, the thirty-six, uh, forty that he has. So that's, I think, one of the, the, the most challenging things is sort of establishing a. Um, rapport with the community, with business, uh, members that. In other towns, you don't really, you're not faced with that, so. I haven't seen anything that is like a problem that needs to fix. Every town has things that can do differently, every town has things that can maybe do a little bit more efficiently, you know, your own. Master plan identified for economic development that, um, the. Uh, the, the former industrial development corporation really should be and. Uh, revived as an economic development committee, that, but that's not a problem solved. Um, you've tackled very uniquely and my fire chief enough and uses it as an example, hey, we just have to go. To our voters and maybe we, because we're looking at, at trying to expand our, um, firefighter EMS. Uh, staff levels and, you know, what Bellingham has done. Uh, to tackle that and bringing on also paramedic onlys. That's a great solution that some towns, um. Are starting to look at because it is impossible. It feels impossible to fill a vacant firefighter paramedic position. Um, so. Unfortunately. I haven't come across something that's like, oh my God, that needs to be fixed on day one because you've. Been making consistent progress and, um. Not trying to take the easy way.
There is no. Describe your skills and abilities in community relations, give examples and discuss how community relations impact your work.
Um, so. I will admittedly, when I have my Friday coffee with the town managers, um, uh. Town hall on, and Upton closes at noon, um. I am there well past noon, three o'clock, sometimes six o'clock, um, in the evening because. The amount of time that it. That I devote to doing some of the community relation things, it's well worth it. Um, to be able to talk to a resident that then has a problem, uh, to be able to offer some solutions. To be able to receive comments and go back to the board, it's invaluable. Um, I take other opportunities to engage with the public, um, I participate in the, the Memorial Day parades. Um, I attend various VFW events. Uh, also, we have, uh, and up in Heritage Day, so, um, basically. Uh, last, uh, Saturday of the month, we have vendors, we have, um, musicians. And right smack in the table, town manager has a table, I just have town information. And I spend about six hours just talking to residents. Some people that are new to town, some that are on boards. Uh, that finally got me alone for, for half an hour, um, and. This past September, it was hot and as you can see, I don't have a lot of shading on my head. Um, I got home and got yelled at for not wearing a hat, um. Uh, I look for those opportunities, I, I attend, um. Uh, public meetings, um, we had a contentious forty B. Uh, last year and I'm showing up at those meetings and talking with residents after, um. Town meeting, saying hi to people, um, and, and. You know, uh, just being available, so I look for those opportunities, um. As well, um, and, you know, I, I do view. Uh, community relations, making sure that, um. Uh, I'm available that, you know. I try to put myself out there to be approachable, um. Do that as much as possible so that at least. People can see besides the, the select board as the elected officials. They, they recognize, um, who the town administrator or manager is. And know that they can be, um, approachable, um, I've even, uh, annually. I'm one of the department, uh, staff that will participate and read across America and. And, uh, reach the third graders, uh, once a year when, when that pops up, so. Uh, and put that out on social media, so at least they, people can see that. How the town is approachable.
Tell us about a community event you have been, have led or been a part of, what was your role on the day of the event?
Uh, so on, uh. I mentioned that we, uh. Had opened, uh, a new community center, or at least I mentioned we were constructing a community center. Um, we had our, our grand opening in, uh, June of, of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and we actually had it intentionally on the town birthday, June fourteenth. Uh, so I was the emcee, um, and, uh, basically. Uh, ran the event inviting up the various speakers, providing recognition for the building committee and. Letting all the other officials also thank, um, everyone involved on that, on that project. Uh, same thing, we had a, uh, we recently went through a. Uh, police chief search and we hired, um, uh, a new police chief back in January and we had a. Uh, basically a pending ceremony for the whole community. Uh, uh, for, uh, Chief, uh, Nick Palmary when he, uh, was officially sort of sworn in. He was sworn in on the side, so at least when he was first hired, he'd still do some work. But we made it a town event, um, it was the first time we had a new police chief. And, um, Chief Bradley was, was there, uh. Seventeen, eighteen years, um, and for, for the town of Upton. You know, that was a significant change, um, so. Uh, not only did we, um, in, in town hall, uh, in Upton, we actually have a. Uh, main hall, it has a stage, it also has lines for basketball court. Um, and we had about a hundred and fifty people show up, everyone from all the police, uh, fire departments. Police and, and, um, uh, represents from other towns. Uh, and members of the public and family members of, of, um, Chief Palmary. So, uh, I was emcee for that as well and, and, you know, then basically in that typical. MC role introducing people to speak, our, our state legislature, our, our, um, state senator. Um, uh, you know, and other officials, um, to, to make it more of a community event.
Please take a moment to offer any closing remarks.
Um. I'd just like to reiterate, it's, it's, it's an honor to be here, uh, before all of you, I'm, I'm, uh. Very, uh, uh, proud to be, be selected as one of the four, I, um, uh. Know the candidates that you're considering, um, also have a lot of experience and have a lot to offer. Um, I think, uh, Bellingham is a little bit more unique for me because I think, um. There aren't many towns within a close proximity, um, that are dealing with some of the. Larger issues associated with, with growth. Uh, associated with maintaining town character, uh, that. Also present challenges from, say, a provision of service, um, you know, financial management. Uh, such as, as Bellingham, um. Larger towns and the, uh, Bellingham being very similar demographically to Grafton and, and Littleton. Um, you're dealing with a lot of the same similarities that, that I've dealt with and you have. A governmental structure that also is very similar to what I had in both of those towns as well. And while all towns are constrained, uh, from a resource and funding perspective, um, you've definitely. Uh, focused in on where. Bellingham views its priorities, i.e. with the override you had for, um, for fire EMS, uh, personnel. But also you're doing it in a very physically managed way and, and watching your FY twenty-six. Uh, budget, uh, presentations, um. You know, I, I think, Donna, as you mentioned, something about how. Uh, in looking at a list of towns and where, uh, the average median tax bill was and. Uh, assessed value that. Uh, the town is doing very well and that it's an opportunity really to say to the residents. On why Bellingham is a great community and, um, that. Uh, you know, in comparison, you are affordable, um. In a state that is highly becoming. Unaffordable, I have two college-age, uh. Uh, daughters, um, and one that will be going to college, uh, by the way, all three went to BBT, so I'm very familiar with BBT, um. And. How we preserve affordability for seniors, how we provide all these services. Um, and how do we accommodate these, all this growth? Um, those, it's clear that Bellingham is focused on assessing and planning for all those. And in my examination, that's what made Bellingham interesting and. Um, I thought, uh, I'd be a good, good fit for it and. Um, Bellingham would be the, the type of town that I could see myself for the next fifteen years. Um, I've already commuted to the Wayland Westons, I'm not going back on the Pike, um, going eastbound. Um, I like Central Mass, I've bounced from Tennessee to Vermont, back to Central Mass for a reason. Um, raised my family in Central Mass and I was commuting to Metro West and South Shore. It's easier to commute an hour than, uh, and be, be someplace where you clearly love. And it's clear that you as elected board members and residents here also feel, um, that Bellingham is a special place. So, so, um, that's why, why didn't I, I, um. You know, my name for it for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mark, you made it under the hour.
Like when someone then says, come on this way, it's, it's almost like second nature.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And the funny difference is mothering was a bloomer girl.
There you go.
Thank you.
Want to take five?
Take five for bio break?
I was just, yes.
Bio break, we will, we will come back here at, um, border, border of.
Yes.
Do I need a moment? We are back, we have concluded our interviews. Uh, before, before I'm gonna let Mary Akati speak. Um, I want to express the gratitude to the. Town Administrator Search Committee, you guys do great, we have four. Well, well. Uh, researched candidates, they were well-spoken. Um, they, they were great. So I want to thank you, thank you guys for that, Mary, I want to thank you. Um, for putting this together and, um. Lastly, I want to thank our, uh, prior chair Sahan. Who was a part of this and was a part of this, getting this process together. Um, I hope Sahan's getting some old and surf rest, but I wanted to know that we are, I think you haven't been thanking. So, Mary?
That's great, so it's all up to you what you want to do next. You know, we see. Committees do it differently, sometimes we say. Do you feel, you know, like? If you have a candidate in mind that you, you want to appoint, do you have a top two? Do you want to say, this is, sometimes people go around and say, this is what I. Go by candidate and say, what do you like best about, you know, candidate one, what do you like best about candidate two? And go systematically that way, we. always recommend you focus on the positive, not any negatives, because it all comes out i- in the wash, but these are qualified people and grown adults, they know what they're doing, you know, so you could do it that way for efficiency, sometimes people say, hey, do you know has the cream risen to the top for you, do you want to say who you would like to move forward, you know, into negotiations, really a sense of where are you as a board and as individuals of what process you want to use at this moment? Until you take a final vote, there's no final vote, but oftentimes we find boards don't want to spend all the time talking about every candidate, the good, the bad, the ugly, the excellent, when in fact there might be a narrowing. So sometimes you say, if we if you go around and say, maybe not even who your favorite is or who your top two are, do you have in your mind a top two? And then if you do, we don't need to talk about each candidate, we can find out who those top two are. But if there's not a top two, we will then go to talk about each candidate, so it really is the will of the board. So I would say throw the process out for discussion and then go from there.
All right, um. Cody. What are your thoughts on this?
Uh I'd be open to moving to a top two. Discussing from there.
Agreed.
Um I I'm open to making a recommendation immediately. I've been doing this for a long time and there's there's one that just absolutely risen to the top, not even close. And I'm very objective in the way I score, I have a score thing, I and there's a huge gap between um well, not a huge gap between one and two, but there's a huge gap between one, two, and then three and four by far, number one. I'd make a recommendation to go into negotiations. And that would be, that's what I want to do, I I'd like to make a recommendation to make an offer to Joseph Layden. Um subject to a thorough background check in in negotiations, he's very strong, he checks all the boxes and then some.
So, thank you for answering the question asked, uh we weren't getting the names yet.
My wait, we have to, I I I I can um, I I would do the top, I have my top two, I would go with that route.
Okay, I I have the the top two, uh I would go that route, so um I guess if we're going with the top two, it would have to be, the boy would have to decide who we were going to extend an an offer to come back for.
Well, I what I would do is, let's find out who your top two are, and if five of you, one of them is the top one,
Yeah.
you may be in the same place, that's what we were trying to do with doing a top two, I could ask it this way. Do you all have a top choice? We know you do.
I do.
Do you, do all of you have a top choice?
I do.
I do.
Oh, then I would ask everybody their top one, right, and then see if it's the same, and if it's not, we'll talk about the two that come up.
Okay. I got one from Mr. List.
Still late, yeah.
And.
Well, um my top one was uh Mr. Laden two.
Um.
I think my top one is gonna be Mr. Laden.
Okay.
Um. My top was Mr. Lovett.
My top was Mr. Lovett.
Which one?
Mr. Lovett.
Okay. So you have now the question is, do we want to talk, because my suspicion, if we ask the ones who had Mr. Layden first, was Mr. Lovett any of those second choice? Or was it Ward or Sousa?
Mr. Love was my second choice.
Okay.
Now I had Mr. Sousa as my second choice, okay?
Mr. Sousa, second choice.
Okay. So we had two, did I miss the second choice in there?
Yeah, what was your second choice?
If I said, if I really had to stretch it to a second, it was Mr. uh Layden.
Okay, so how do you want to do this? Do you want to talk about why you like the top, what you like about your top? Or what do you want to do?
I am going to see if there is any um, did you, did you formally make a motion?
I did make a motion.
So do we have a second on Mr. Martinez's motion?
Yeah, I'll do a second.
We have to, we have to, let's do a roll.
Yep.
Hillary, can you please conduct the roll?
Yeah, can we have a roll call vote for um the motion is Mr. uh Layden um for the town administrator pending final background check and successful contract negotiations, Cody?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
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 Well, it passes.
Or one carries.
Yeah. Wow, y'all are efficient, that was easy.
Well, we had four extremely, extremely good candidates, so it wasn't like in my book, there was no big gap anywhere, so it was just a matter of how the presentations and experience went.
But it asked, and I agree with them, they were all very qualified, and I think they that the community did a good job, but what stood up for me and the way I approached this was really um thinking through over the last couple of days, where are we as a town? What does this town need the most right now? We're going through a lot of challenges, so number one, we've got we have a big decision on health insurance, you know, for our our basic premium to go move up to over a million dollars, we have a lot to think about in the budget. We've got the New England Country Club, big development, we have the battery, we have roads, we've got thirty five million dollars worth of roads that need to be new construction, we've had twenty seven, twenty seven since January one um water main breaks, twenty seven. I mean, where there is a lot, I can go on and on and on, and then I looked at the level of experience. And I can remember having conversations with Dennis in the past about, you know, um potential town administrators, this is before your board members were here, and he kept talking about town planners have outstanding experience because they get thrown a lot. Um and we had one before Jim Cupford, you know, before Rob, who was outstanding, and we were all talking about him potentially being the next town administrator, even though he wasn't one, but he had a degree, but he absolutely, then with, they said, kind of a rock. So this gentleman's been, he's worked for cities like towns like Weston in Wayland, all challenging towns, all challenging municipalities, all challenging citizens, and he's done an outstanding job in Upton, and he's covered TIFs, Mass Works, he checks every single box. He's negotiated union agreements, he's been on both sides, when I say a clear difference, knowing where we are as a town and what we need as someone with vision, we need experience. And they're all good, but when you look at, and I'm not going to say anything about the other ones, that's why I looked at Mr. Layden because of where we are as a town, what we need is in leadership, we don't just need more administration, we need a real visionary type person, someone that can is looking for the forest of the trees and is going to be committed for the next ten to fifteen years, and that's why to me, Mr. Layden stood out, why I called it a a big gap, because they all can do the job, but this one fits the bill so much better um for what we need in this town today. So that's why I voted the way I did.
You ready to go?
Uh you know, I I think Don uh probably said it, and and you know, I listen, I've been here the longest of any of you, you know, I'm going on thirty seven years sitting around here and um I've seen.
You started when you were ten?
Hmm.
You started when you were ten?
Yeah, just about, yeah, I was very, very young, um but really and truly, I've seen so many changes throughout our community in all those years. And Dennis is the hardest one to ever replace because he's been our mainstay. But I felt that Mr. Layden came across with what I was looking for that and and as Don said, he checked all the boxes and having all of those different qualifications. It is very, very important, you know, Dennis sits in on just about every single thing, there's nothing that goes on in this town that he doesn't sit in. And so I really feel that this gentleman is going to be able to do the same thing, and it's important that he is in, it's important for my fire, it's important for my police, it's important for DPW, it's important for the schools. It's important that we have someone who's got some of those boxes checked that these work to be. So that was, that was my thing, it was the experience that really, you know, it was for me the most important thing.
I'll keep it short and sweet, I it was the most impressive interview that I thought, we had four amazing candidates and uh it was the one that I really went, wow, at the end of it and uh
Yeah.
it was very impressive.
You ready, Paul, Jen?
Um, no, I I respect the board's decision, it was a great process, I was very impressed by all that you brought to the table and opened my eyes to the whole poss- possibility of what you do and and we you did as well, we, I appreciate that. Um what I saw in chat was what I kind of admired in Dennis early on, and I saw a lot of that Dennis quality, and I was eager and excited, that's why he came for top for me, um. I'm sure Mr. Love will do a great job for us, I'm I'm sure any one of them put a gun to it. Um so I was, I could see a lot of Dennis in in chat, so um that's why I chose what I did, so, but again, I thank you for all your help in this process.
Right, that I just want to say thank you again, uh this this is long overdue, I think. Uh I'm sure Dennis is doing a happy dance somewhere, right?
Well, you're not broadcasting, so no one knows yet.
But I think we have broadcast.
We are broadcasting.
I thought we were broadcasting.
I'm recording.
Or recording, oh, I thought, okay, my mistake. Well, I I'm sure somebody in the room has texted Dennis. I'm sure somebody's on Twitter right now, um. So no, but thank thank you, uh Marty, you you're 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 a committee, they're great. Um I think these are the 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 these four candidates were the were the best that we've seen come forward um in in a while, and unfortunately, I've sat here for all of them with 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 hand. Um so and uh the candidates, I mean, um I mean, they were all stellar. Um I saw Dennis in two of them, I I think I I um I mentioned before, um I think um you know, Mr. Lloyd would would be just basically be like, use Dennis, take these over again, picking up right where Dennis left Florida. Um you know, Mr. Love it brought, I think he had the the most energy out of out of all the candidates, and I think he would would have injected the town with a lot of energy. Um but I I I think we, you know, the the board has spoken, uh we were all elected with with one mission. Um and and that mission, I think, is pending negotiations and 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 your your research.
Yeah, I I think that any one of the candidates would assert you well, and it is the will of the board, and that's why you have you know, it's one of your most important tasks is to fill this job.
And I.
So you've done it well, and what we will do is I will communicate to all of the candidates um all of your feedback, um and what I will do is, I guess my question is, I will let them all know the vote, that what there was a decision made, and is it the HR director that's gonna call after me? Or is it gonna be the chair, I'm assuming you're meeting next Monday, um so I will let him know that, but who's gonna reach out after that?
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, so I'll work that through um the assistant HR director.
So.
PA, HR director, sorry.
HR Director Assistant PA.
I am doing it backwards.
There's just one thing I wanted to say for a long time, mission accomplished.
Well, yeah.
Well, you know what, I I think you're gonna be well served, and I'm really just very happy for you, and it really isn't what we do, I think we have a, we have a tight process at the Collins Center, but when you have such a good committee and you heard each one of these candidates saying they did the research on what a great town this is, so like, you know, so this has been a joy for us when we were so pleased with the volume of candidates we had. Committee had a tough time narrowing who to bring in for interviews, you know, and then even to say, well, we're should, who should we move forward, in some searches, I'm begging for somebody to walk by to pull them in, you know, so um but we don't move forward being candidates.
I just.
You know, and I think that's our kind of mantra, and as I hope you saw that.
Mr. Chair, if I can just add one thing.
Yeah, go for it.
I've said this many times, and I believe the board feels in a similar way, but I'll say it this way, we had this many candidates, even though we've had kind of a bumpy ride to get here, because they recognize how strong our community is. They recognize the strength of our department heads, our police chief, our fire chief, DPW, our superintendent of schools, the level of, don't mean to hold you up, but I believe that's why they want to come to Bellingham, it's just not because it's an attractive package possibly, you know, it's because they look at this town and they see what we're doing and they see the decisions that we've made over the past handful of years around our economic development, et cetera. I believe we are very attractive, which is why our housing prices are starting are are rising more. Um and they'll continue to rise, it's a really good town, it's a great town to raise children, et cetera, so I believe that's why they want to come here. Because it's a great town, and and I'll just say this, and to Dennis, when you watch this tomorrow, um yeah, you're not gonna be very far away, but you've left this, you've left this position, this town in amazing, amazing shape. And we couldn't be more grateful as a town, and I've been here forty plus years as a citizen, and I've known you, Dennis, close to, close to that many years, um I'm grateful, and I know the board, I'm not speaking of the board, but I'm sure they are too, you've left this down in wonderful shape. Thank you.
We owe a huge debt to Dennis, we do, we really, everybody in this room, if he goes up one way or another, owes a huge debt to Dennis, so. All right, so I have a motion to adjourn.
So, Jen, second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.